It removes three spots on Main Street that begin at the eastern edge of, excuse me, the western, western edge of the pharmacy and go to the eastern edge of the pharmacy, as I recall. So there's three, essentially three spots being removed. The parking, going back in time, obviously, we have public parking at Elm and Park. The, you know, maybe it's not largely advertised, but the Senior Center obviously is a public facility as well. From the standpoint of adding parking without purchase of property and, you know, significant change, there's not, I mean, to find the three, you know, to find the three spots, I'm sure we could find the three spots if we needed to, but I don't know that that is the issue with this. You know, I mean, to me, the issue with this is widening and adding left turn lanes. You know, if we don't want to do that, that's certainly an option. But I don't know that that, that the parking situation that we have throughout the downtown is going to drive this. You know, I think a lot of it is, when you talk to Larry at Bruce's Furniture, Larry says, you know, if there's not a spot in front of the store, they're not going to stop. They're not going to park in the back when it comes through the back door, park in the side when it comes through the side door. And I, you know, I mean, that's anecdotal, but that's what he observes in his store. And, but there's physically nothing more we can do in front of storefronts.
Well, and I understand that, but I think Christie's point is, you know, where is the commitment to find other parking downtown besides that?
Well, I think Dan's not a really good, I mean, pointed, it's one piece that you talked that, that any long-term planning might include land acquisition, but without a downtown development plan, that, you know, it seems like everything has to be titled to create an action item. And I'm not, my focus, but we have to go that direction because with the traffic that we're expecting, even off some of the successes we're seeing right now, that's going to feed into further success. And if we don't have a plan that ties into those pieces, that gives the, all these people that own the buildings now, all the people that are looking on businesses, 10, 15-year plans to see, well, I know here's something that might be a limit right now, but here's the plan that's going to be in place. If I can fit in that long-term, there's going to be something there. So we have to have a development plan to, I think, a downtown district because people want Gardner to be a bedroom community that's going to be surrounded from industrial. To maintain that, Main Street is one of our most vital resources. If we don't protect that and put a plan in place that says this is exactly how we are going to protect that, it's not, you know, like Sam mentioned, it's not lip service. If it's in place that way, that means here's where we are being held accountable. Even once this council's been gone and there's new people in place, that 15-year plan is in place, they have to act beyond that. So I think that's where this needs to go, and we're getting way off topic of 3B. We might want to go back that way, but I think that is not, not a thing to work on next year. It's a thing to work on next week and develop to go forward that way.
Well, and I think that maybe we should be looking at a committee to study, you know, downtown Gardner and a plan for moving forward for the future. I think we need to get it on a work session that's coming up soon. And I think we need to start addressing it sooner rather than later so that people like Sam and people like Teresa understand that we're not just paying lip service and we're trying to address their concerns and move forward. And it's, you know, I'm not volunteering to chair the committee or anything, but I think that we should, should get something moving.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, I don't know how much information you know, but everyone who comes in to that bond loves downtown. They look at the year that it was built and it brought the bond to like concrete floors and their original walls and the tin ceilings and, I mean, that's a lot of what we talk about. It's just Gardner and the downtown and how beautiful that place is. And it's just, if you don't consider what's going to happen, there's not going to be talk about it anymore. No one's going to see it.
Lovely space there, too.
And it is, it is important. Obviously, we worked with the young man Eagle Scout that did the research, put the box on the, on the buildings and so on. You know, we identified the downtown as important and created the downtown enhancement district that had several successes with regard to expansion. And when we talked about expanding that district and putting a plan together that takes it, you know, further blocks north and south so that we create a much wider district for planning. And I agree that that's an important place in our community. But when we talked about planning and had $75,000 for a community development plan, that was eliminated from our budget. So, you know, I mean, am I hearing a dollar commitment? Because it's not, you know, this is not something that we have, that we just give the staff and say, let's put together a plan. This is something that involves, you know, a greater organization than that. It involves the downtown business owners, it involves the residents in that area. But I don't know that the two tie directly. This project, you know, if we put a plan together to say we're going to put a plan in for our downtown, that plan is going to have to take into consideration that 56 Highway is today, a state highway and will continue to be a state highway, that's going to have some traffic that's flow-through, but some traffic that's local. How we direct that traffic is important. Senator Olson, in that meeting, talked about a bypass so that through-traffic would go around the downtown, which in concept is not a bad idea. However, in order to accomplish that, there are significant numbers of properties that would need to be purchased along the way and then route that traffic off and through it. And, you know, I mean, that's not a, it's not, you know, it's not, it's not buying a couple of older buildings and creating parking, you know. When you look at what we, what has happened historically, the library. When you talk about a community investment in our downtown, the old library was purchased by the city of Gardner. The land on the, where the new library sits was purchased by the city of Gardner and given to the library to keep the foot traffic that, you know, to keep the traffic coming to the library, coming to our down. I mean, that was a conscious decision because the library was looking to move east of town, wrong way, east of town to Moonlight. So, you know, I think we have a track record of, you know, working to keep the downtown going. The downtown area is the only area within the community whose sidewalks are clean and maintained by city staff. The, so, you know, I mean, it's, it is, it is something that we do consider important. Obviously, you know, this building was consciously, you know, it was a conscious decision to keep it downtown and make sure it stayed downtown. So, you know, how we accomplish this, you know, is up to us. But, you know, from the standpoint of adding parking, not doing this project doesn't add parking.
I think we deal with what we have right now. If you eliminate any more, it's not gross.
Again, you know, it's, it's three spots when, when you consider the, you know, the spots that are available. In order to add to that, you know, we have to purchase something, you know. Or, you know, you know, the footprint of the Senior Center would give us, have done another six, seven, eight spots possibly. And I don't think anyone, I mean, I don't think anyone wants to eliminate the Senior Center. You know, is there something we could do? The, you know, the bank has, has parking next to the chiropractic office on Park Street. You know, I mean, is there opportunities to purchase there? You know, those kinds of things are discussions worthwhile, worthwhile having, absolutely. Because, you know, we don't want the buildings vacant. We're glad when, when there's people.
I just wanted to educate you guys on what I hear around town, what I'm getting.
I, I have my dry cleaning done at Kent, so I have regular conversations regarding parking challenges. Teresa, hang on a second, we've got another question.
Have you, have you worked through the Chamber of Commerce? Have you enlisted their lobbying support? Is that certainly a function of what the chamber should be working on, shouldn't it? Is to, you know, lobby the city council and staff to look after these small businesses, right?
Who are you looking at?
Oh, look, it's Steve.
Oh, okay. What are you looking at?
I mean, that would seem to be the best course of action is to, is to get other small business owners together and as well as Sam and lobby, you know, use, use the lobbying power of the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, that's, that's what I think they're there for, is to look after the small businesses. But I think your, your point is well made, and well, actually, Sam's point is well made, that, you know, this road is going to be a thoroughfare for the southwest Johnson County Brake District.
No, it's not.
I, I mean.
That's certainly not the intent in.
That's, that's the way it's becoming. And if you look at HDR, if you look at HDR study back in the intermodal days, I think, I just remember reading that 56 Highway was going to be, you know, projected to be six lanes of, of traffic to, you know.
As I recall the HDR study, the HDR study took into consideration traffic regardless of the intermodal and indicated that based on growth, that that traffic was going to increase anyway. With respect to, you know, this project, the, the traffic to and from the intermodal is being addressed with its own interchange. Groundbreaking was last Friday, I believe, on that interchange. So, you know, the through-traffic on this route exists today and has existed for a number of years as the subdivisions increased on the west of town, that traffic increased as well. Subdivisions increased on the, in the north and west, the traffic through the downtown increased as well. You know, from my perspective, in, I would, I would want to make it easy for those of us that live in the southwest to travel downtown to get to places rather than take, you know, an outer road, 183rd, to get to places. Similarly, in the northwest, I would want, I would hope that the people that live there would come through the downtown, even if their, even if their ultimate destination is somewhere east. It would be nice to have them come through the downtown just to see what's there, to have that flow so that they know what's going on downtown, so that they say, hey, what's that new business going in on the corridor of Elm and Main? Oh, that's the new, you know, the new scrapbook business. Oh, look, there's another coffee shop. Oh, the groundhouse looks nice. It looks great. Hey, I heard that a couple above has awesome biscuits and gravy. You know, I mean, those are the kinds of things and having them have easy access to it is, is good. You know, one of the discussions has been, well, just leave it alone. Don't do anything. Okay, well, then, then we're not taking into consideration the residents' complaints regarding the the safety of the, of the intersection and, and the flow. So we've got to do that. Well, the, you know, okay, we'll just make the center lane a left turn only, and you've got one lane eastbound, one lane westbound, and then you've got challenges with respect to signalization. Do you have eight cycles to get them through? Or do you have a left turn arrow partially and then a green yield on green-type configuration that helps a little bit, but you still have that risk of the, of the yield green? You know, ideally, and it was discussed in this meeting, you know, ideally, if you could purchase the corners and design it, it would be, you know, create the clean slate to do the design. But, you know, we don't have the wherewithal to do that, nor do I, you know, think we should turn that, those four corners into, into roadway. I think, you know, whether they remain what they are in perpetuity, I don't know. I mean, obviously, the liquor store was a gas station one time, but it's been a liquor store since I've been here, since 1987, and now it's, it's for sale. So, you know, I think, I agree, we need, we need a plan for our downtown. And we need to have someone study that, and we need to have meetings where people come in and provide input. Because quite frankly, if we do a, a plan for downtown, a real plan for downtown, there'll be recommendations that we designate some areas as development districts, which means it makes them eligible for TIF purchase and repurposing those properties. And while that sounds good on the surface, it, it's challenging because you're disrupting the lives and the futures of the people that own that property. Whether they own it as commercial property today or they own it as residential property today. I mean, those are the kinds of discussions that need to be had, and they're uncomfortable discussions. But, you know, I think for this, for this project, you know, it's either, you know, look at this alternative or, you know, from an engineering perspective, I don't know if there's other, I don't know that we have the, the knowledge or the skills to come up with other alternatives other than leave it alone.
I think as council, our job is to, is to make a decision that it offers the greatest amount of good for the greatest amount of people. And as to Sam's point of providing lip service, that's exactly what option 3B does. If we weren't worried about what it was going to do to downtown, the obvious decision would be go to option one because that impacts the greatest amount of traffic flow and totally ignores downtown businesses. By going with 3B, I think that we're doing the best of both options. Taking away as few parking spots as we possibly can, yet also making it safer for everybody that comes in and out of Gardner, residents or non-residents. And then I also agree with coming up with a plan at a future date of helping the parking situation as best we can.
So, given that, how would council like to proceed with new business item number two?
I move that we authorize staff to proceed with the recommended alternative, option 3B. Second.
Motion, Brockstman, Second Freeman, that we direct staff to develop a plan to implement option 3B. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I hope that the sentiment is clear from at least this body that as we move through this process, that we take into account, I think as Sam put it, the lessons learned from Moonlight when we go through this. One advantage to this project over Moonlight is that this is not a federal project. So we do have direct control and direct contact with the, with the contractors on this. I know that was a major issue with Moonlight, but we do need to consider that. And I think if we could please have updates regarding discussions on right-of-way acquisition, how the plans are going, you know, what we, sort of plans we have for access to the, to the existing businesses to ensure that that occurs. And then, I guess, something in the back of mind for council, you know, we talked about Moonlight and how to avoid that. The way you avoid that is you make the improvement before the buildings are there, before the businesses are there. And when you look at our commercial corridors, Waverly Road being one, the way to avoid impacting future businesses on that corridor would be to develop the corridor prior to their, their settling. Otherwise, it's an after-the-fact event and we know, we know what happens. Okay. New business item number three, consider directing staff to review and provide organizational and fiscal analysis on the Board of Utilities exploratory committee recommendation.
Mayor and council, this is the formal action that was requested the last time we discussed this matter of the exploratory committee's work and recommendation. And approving this would get staff started on the analysis required to proceed in that direction.
I know, Brian, you weren't here for that discussion. I was going to say, I don't know if you had the opportunity to.
I didn't get it all, but I've watched most of it.
To view it, and if you had, you know, questions or anything, please.
I don't have any questions to stop from doing anything tonight.
Okay.
So who will, or who, who does council want to make the appointments to this board?
Actually, my suggestion would probably be to do something similar to the ordinance that established the electric utility board, which is ordinance 2296. And there are some things that are in there about appointments. The mayor appoints and the council confirms. But I, I do want to speak to one thing that you had brought up the last time. And you were asking who can look to remove a member of an appointed board. In 2296, section 2D, I think it's the last paragraph, says that board members can be removed by city council for negligent or willful failure to carry out duties or misprision of office. So, I mean, I, that was one of the things that you had commented about before. You were concerned about whether or not a board member could be removed.
So what's the process for doing that?
My guess is that you did it on the agenda.
What's the, which ordinance is that?
It's 2296. I would say that probably, considering the, the formation of the electric utility board, the success the board has had, ordinance 2296 might be a blueprint for the ordinance. Or an amendment to ordinance 2296 to expand the powers to include water and wastewater might be in order. But, I mean, I, I believe that the blueprint is there. As far as appointments, the appointment process is what the appointment process is, whether it's planning commission, board of zoning appeals, electric utility board, or replacing people on the city council. Now, who's to say what tomorrow will bring as far as how the appointment process is addressed in the future? But we've got something in place currently. We've got a high-functioning board in place currently. I think we're just looking to add water and wastewater to that mix.
One, one thought I have regarding that is the, you know, as far as the analysis and the discussion that goes on, you know, does the number need to be increased? Does the mix need to be changed? Do we need to bring different skill sets in, you know, those kind of things? The other question regarding utility, not, the governance piece, obviously, on the board of management piece of the utility, you know, right now, we have a director, but that director's an electric-focused director, and we're talking about, you know, at a different level. So is it, does that, does that mix change? Does the city, does the city administrator become part of the, part of the mix? Do we have, you know, do we have water waste? I think that discussion can happen as well.
Well, and I, I think that that's probably what's going to be part of what staff studies.
Right.
And as far as that goes, as far as the recommendation, I think that it should be direct. City and Gardner Energy staff, not just staff. Let's make sure that, that we get members of Gardner Energy involved as, as well as city staff. But, you know, when it comes to the makeup of the board, and this is a conversation I've had with a couple of other people, you know, we've got five members on the board. Two of them have electrical expertise, and two of the members are finance people. We've got one member that's got an engineering background, albeit in software. But, you know, if, if we were to add to that board two members, preferably people that have some kind of knowledge or experience in dealing with water or wastewater issues, it could be somebody with a civil engineering background. I'm certain that we can find a couple of willing citizens in a, a city of almost 20,000 people that'd probably be willing to take on that challenge and provide balance for the board. As far as, as far as who would be in charge? You know, we had Walt Bealsels here a very short period of time ago, and he was the first one to tell you that, that he was a CPA and a finance guy, and he couldn't tell you how to run an electric or water system. But, you know, we've got, we've got a highly skilled workforce. We've got good management in place. We've got an electric director that was an operations manager and vice president with KC P and L. You know, we might have the wherewithal in-house already to, to move forward with that. Delivering utility services, while there's certainly differences between liquid and energy, at the end of the day, it's still providing the service. at the end of the day, it's still providing the service, transmitting it to the consumers that live in our community. And, yeah, I think that conversation about where we go probably starts with with management people that we already have on hand.
I agree from the standpoint of water and wastewater, I think also because of the shared services, you know, the public works aspect needs to be part of that discussion as well.
Certainly.
You know, obviously with the line maintenance and so on, and line and street maintenance and how those interplay, so.
Absolutely.
That should be part of the membership. From this perspective, what, what degree of specificity? Huh?
You have what we need to get going, and that includes working with all city staff, people who start in our electric.
Okay, so.
Gardener, electric, finance, you know, utility building, whatever.
Okay. How would council like to proceed?
I move we direct staff to review and provide organizational and fiscal analysis on the Board of Public Utilities exploratory committee recommendation to form a Board of Public Utilities.
Second.
Motion, Morrow, second freeman, that we direct staff to review, provide analysis on the Board of Utilities exploratory committee recommendation. That recommendation was to consider governance and management of the three city utilities under one appointed board, just to summarize what the recommendation was. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
And you got that, it was Councilman Morrow, councilman. Okay, new business item number four, consider authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to fund additional treatment capacity at Edgerton's future treatment plant and other improvements for the project. Jim?
We have been talking with council and with the city of Edgerton's staff and council about the possibility of going cooperative with them on making more capacity for the treatment plant that they're currently in the process of designing. And in light of what we have talked about doing, we have presented you with the the term paper that kind of outlines the terms of what the staff and the four council members have come up with. And to lay out kind of how each entity would pay for it for each piece and what might be the fairest way of doing that based on the needs and the facilities that need to be provided. So there are a number of facilities that would be provided. The treatment plant, a couple of different force mains and lift stations, and a couple of gravity mains, one that would be in Edgerton and one that would be in, all in Gardener. The Gardener one would only serve Gardner residents. The other one would serve both Gardner and Edgerton residents. We have Jeff Keller here tonight from Burnson McDonald's, who can help talk about some of the cost figures and and the various needs that we have to make the plant and everything else run appropriately. And basically, I'd introduce Jeff to go over some of those cost figures. Melissa, if you wouldn't mind looking up, we put three or four PDF files in the presentation folder.
Jim, is there, is there any difference in what we, the separate packet versus what we have in our packet?
I don't believe so.
Other than the ones in color?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to.
It should be the same document, just didn't know if everybody would have it before him tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff and Kim were talking about some of the cost figures.
Good evening. I think the packet you have in front of you, as Councilman Harrison said, has not changed from what you've seen before. You also have an attachment in there that's the previous study we did for the city, looking at a very high level. You also have a figure, which you have seen before, which general, actually, there's a new figure, that shows a component of the infrastructure that would be purely Gardener's. And the function of that would be to allow the Edgerton wastewater plant to provide immediate service to Gardener. And so as soon as it's built, you'd be receiving a benefit from it. Now, that piece wasn't included in our initial evaluation, but it does provide some benefit, mutual benefit for both communities. And we have looked, again, at a really high level of the finances involved in multiple phases and trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison of doing expansion to your existing infrastructure versus this collaborative approach. And even with this additional infrastructure that'd be part of Gardener's wastewater system, it's very beneficial on a financial side, both from the upfront initial capital costs and from the long-term costs out to several phases into the future. You know, once you get seven or eight years into the future, that crystal ball gets a little murky, but based on our most conservative estimates, considering changes in technology and changes in policy that, you know, no one in here can really forecast, there's very few scenarios where it doesn't turn out to be a net savings to the city. In terms of the details of the term sheet that you guys have, that was developed in conjunction with Jeff White with Columbia Capital Management, and that's not really my area of expertise. So if there's questions related to that, I'd have to defer to him.
Is this, did we get a copy of this, or?
I don't know whether you've seen that before or not. I don't believe you have. This was something that was developed mainly for presentation last week or tonight, whichever we were able to get to. And it takes into account the additional facilities that we'd be building in Gardener in order to immediately divert some of our south lift station flow. And that's the Gardener infrastructure that you see there, where it says zero Edgerton and 2.2 to 3.2 million for the Gardener portion. The reason there's such a large variation there is, you know, Jeff hadn't had a chance to mention, but nothing is really known of any certainty about where the rock is in that neighborhood, but we know it's not real deep. How deep, you know, that makes a difference. But at any rate, if it's shallower, it's going to be higher, higher cost. If it's deeper, then it'll be the lower cost. But we don't know until we do some more exploration. But at any rate, the savings, as he had pointed out last week, is still significantly, at the end of the day, significant savings to Gardener to go this route.
Melissa, can you go back to the map? We don't have a copy of this either, right? Or did I miss this?
No, it's in your presentation packet, or not in your packet, but on the material for tonight. That's why we brought it. It's been dissolved in the last little figure.
Does this?
Not in writing, no. In the computer.
Does this divert existing flow to the southwest? I mean, I know it, I know it diverts the Horizon Trail. Obviously, that becomes now a gravity to the southwest, right?
Probably gravity, but again, depends on how deep the rock is. It may be beneficial just to leave it there and pump a very short distance, you know, which would be more.
Right, but any, but the existing force main.
Right.
Does this divert flow from that existing force?
It does.
Okay, so we're actually diverting flow that would otherwise be heading north into this by installing, by adding this.
That's one of the reasons to put it in there now, is it does two things. It relieves the Bull Creek Lift Station and the Kill Creek Treatment Plant from as much flow as we can send that way.
Do we know what that amount is on a daily?
The daily basis without rainfall is about 500 or 600 gallons a minute.
Okay. Today, tomorrow, it's?
Yeah, tomorrow after the rain, it could be 2,500 gallons a minute, so.
Can we go back to that?
Yeah, go back to the.
Can somebody walk us through that?
The schedule, yeah.
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 So, you know, what this is, is the contributions from each community for the first phase of construction, which is the only phase being contemplated right now. This would be for a half million gallon per day facility, where each community would have half of the capacity dedicated. So what we have in the first column is the cost of just the plant itself. And then in the second column, where it says pipeline slash PS cost, that's really where a lot of your savings is found, because Edgerton has to put all this pipe in. They have to dig the trench, they have to lay the pipe, they have to get through all the rock. Gardener sees huge savings there because the trench is already dug. The equipment's already there. All you have to do is make it a little bit wider and purchase the pipe and the labor to put the pipe in a trench that's already mostly dug. So there's a big discrepancy there, and that's a lot of the savings. And then that Edgerton project total was sort of where we were the last time I was here to talk to council, was that initial study. And that was, there's savings there, and then there's additional savings in the future. The next column that says Gardener infrastructure, that is that additional piece. The infrastructure that you'd need to take flow that's currently going to your existing plant, going to Bull Creek Lift Station, and send it to Edgerton. And as Jim said, there's a number of benefits. It releases a lot of flow that would otherwise go to your treatment plant, which pushes you into a schedule where you have to expand that plant. As long as you take flow away from it, then it lives to see another day, longer and longer, and pushes that out into the future. It also reduces your O and M costs, your life cost, because you're not pumping all that water uphill, all that distance. You're kind of using gravity, and it's less expensive from an O and M standpoint. And then also, it kind of builds up some of the infrastructure in that area, so that you have that opportunity for economic development that ultimately would also be served by that new treatment facility. And so that overall total, as Jim pointed out, you have a range there of about a million dollar spread, because until we get out there with drill rigs and look and see how hard is the rock, how deep is the rock, you just don't know how much this pipeline work will cost. But that's, what you see is a fairly conservative range to cover that uncertainty.
So that, that number is in millions, is that what you're?
All those numbers are in millions, that's correct. And if you remember, when we were comparing this to the upgrade at the, your existing wastewater treatment plant, when you include in the pipeline work you need to do, the pump station expansion you need to do, the treatment plant expansion you need to do, that was on the order of $25 million or something like that. That would have to be paid in the very first phase of the work, because you can't scale that back much more than that. And so you're pushing out the date upon which you have to do that really expensive expansion to some unknown date. And instead, you're replacing that with a much smaller upfront capital cost. That gives you the same service that you need.
That's variable, that you.
That's right. That is variable, as I'm showing. That's correct.
Jim, I believe you had told, and maybe this was in the meetings that we had with Edgerton, we were talking about 100,000 plus gallons per day that would be able to be diverted upon completion, taking that off of the Bull Creek Lift Station and the.
That's correct. It was 150,000 gallons a day that we would be able to divert from the south lift station at that force main point to divert to Edgerton.
Also, the kind of development that we might expect along that quadrant of the city, the commercial type stuff, you know, that's not the kind of development that's going to necessarily push us over the quarter million gallon threshold, is it?
Well, it's certainly a part of it. That doesn't push it as much as if it were single-family residential or even multifamily. But it does contribute in every little bit that we have coming in as more development now pushes that expansion of Kill Creek a little closer.
But if we were, if we were not diverting that 150,000 gallons a day and then adding on to that, it puts us that much closer to the 2 million gallons a day.
Absolutely.
So that would require the upgrade.
But that $25 million cost, that was for 20, that was for 2.5 million gallons, right? And we?
About 1.5.
1.5?
1.25, actually. A full treatment train expansion at Kill Creek is 2 and 1/2 MGD. We were proposing to do about half of that. And that's, that's what the.
One and a quarter.
One and a quarter, yes.
For $25 million?
Not just the expansion, no. But the expansion of Kill Creek, a 36-inch gravity main that we would have to expand, a force main from Bull Creek to that 36-inch main, additional pumps at Bull Creek, and possibly even the storage tank at Bull Creek. All of that would make the 25 million that Jeff just mentioned.
But the addition, then the next one point, the second half of that would not cost 25 million because of the.
No, no, no.
All it is, we're front, because of the nature of development, we've got a front load.
Yeah, the second half, the current estimate for, well, current estimate for the whole 2 and 1/2 is about 16 million. And so about 10 to 12 of that would be the 1 and 1/2, excuse me, 1 and 1/4.
10 to 12 million would be to increase at 1 and 1/4?
Yes.
Versus 500, really 250,000 gallons for 9.7 million? Is that, am I reading that right, or? Because the whole plan is initially going to be half a million gallons per day. Gardner gets half, Edgerton gets half. And so we're looking at 250,000 gallons of treated sewage for 9.72 million dollars on the high end versus 12 million for 1 and 1/4 million. Right?
No, the actual plant cost there is the 5.48. So it would be 12 million versus 5.48 for just the plant. The other things that we have to do on there would compare against the 25 million that we'd have to spend to go north versus the 8.72 or 9.72 to go south with Phase 1. Ultimately, if we go with Phase 2 and probably even a Phase 3 to get up to a full 1 and 1/2 MGD at Edgerton, there would be additional cost on that, and Jeff had estimated that.
Yeah, I mean, as, as you go out to the Phase 3, you start to get more and more uncertain. I mean, but even when we mapped out to that far and made a lot of really conservative estimates, you still were, overall, project costs were less going to the new plant out south than going north. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that, you know, you do, you save a lot of money upfront with Phase 1. And then you have to spend a little money on the subsequent phases, but they're pretty small, because once you build that initial quarter million gallon of capacity, that plant is specifically designed to be increased in small pieces, because we know it's going to happen. Whereas the existing plant you've got is a good-sized plant, but you can only expand it in big chunks. And so, you know, you pay what you pay upfront, and then the expansions are relatively inexpensive versus what you have here at your existing plant, where it'd be a very expensive upfront payment. And then future expansions would also be very expensive. So it's, you know, in every phase, it's beneficial.
So what is the 250,000 gallons per day cost to Gardener residents in terms of rates is how much?
Well, I'd have to decide how you're going to finance that. That's a financing question. It's not really a capital cost question.
Tell us about how much that would be?
No, because I don't know how many years you're spreading it. I don't know whose money that's to us. I don't know what the interest rate is. I don't know anything. We're not to that point.
That's kind of an important detail. Wouldn't we all agree?
I think that we would agree that it's an important detail, but, you know, financing for a project like this could be done through the KDIG revolving fund, which, this is the state revolving fund, which we refin, we voted to refinance recently at 1.95%. I mean, it's, the finance cost is you're just not going to find any less expensive money.
Well, maybe, but what is the cost toward the rate? Well, maybe, but what is the cost toward the rate that this 5.48 million or 8.72 million will add to our rates? That's the most important feature, right?
I guess the question is, we'd still have that, we'd have to know what, if we wanted to compare the two, we'd have to ask the same question about what it would take to expand the Kill Creek and move that. So, I mean, the assumption is if it costs more to expand the Kill Creek, then there's going to be some cost incrementally higher to the right there for the Kill Creek aspect of it than for this aspect of it. Now, what that actual number is, we don't know. I mean, you know, the question that I think's more germane is, do we need to expand to our capacity?
Well, and what is, I guess, the other germane question is, is what is the appetite for a $25 million expansion, whereas if we do this expansion, we can push that one off for quite a while and maybe build some connotes to, you know.
I think that's an important point, that, I mean, this plan doesn't, well, it creates a debt load earlier, it doesn't create a debt that wasn't going to be incurred down the road anyway, it's only going to make it smaller. So rather than put off, which I think they've done in the past, that made rate increases and other things a little bit bigger pain, by going in with a more proactive plan now, we're able to lessen that impact. I mean, is that a big success?
That's exactly the point, yes.
So going this route is going to be less expensive over the long term, and puts us in better position long term because of that incremental increases, so gives us a chance to catch up with some of those costs a little bit more than trying to fund 25 million at one time under a longer debt that would be longer to expire that as well.
I'd like to hear from the council members who worked on the committee, get an idea of how it went, what the discussions were like, you know, just a sense of-
Sure. You know, we sat through a couple of different meetings to try to iron out the details, sitting at the table. It was something, I guess, that the simple word, Edgerton was very welcoming to it, they understood the opportunity for everyone there. It sounds like the staffs had worked quite a bit hand-in-hand before Chris and I even came to the table and had a lot of work done, and having those folks there. There was some definite back and forth, I think there was a couple of different revisions to make sure the most fair plan was put in place for both sides. And I know our staff has, I asked Jim directly, and it's thought that we've come to the best solution in that regard, and hopefully Jeff and Beth, if you ask them, would feel the same way. So it certainly wasn't anything that was thrown together, there's a lot of work, and a lot of our people put a lot of time in on the back end to put the solution together, which, you know, I'm thankful for that, but as far as cordial meetings, they very much were. When we sat down, I mean, everyone was there with the singular goal, and they worked towards that, and the give and take was very friendly, and it really worked the way, hopefully, kind of leads towards different pieces, because we are so connected with the school district and other thing. I hope that kind of lends itself to some of the other discussions we have to have down the road. I think Chris kind of left with that same impression, but I'll let him say what he thinks.
Absolutely, I think the intergovernmental cooperation was high. And, you know, I think they were very informational, and I think that we learned a lot, and I think that the thing that people are going to come back to on this is, you know, this is not a my eyes are bigger than my stomach type situation. This is, this is an easily digestible, bite-sized chunk of infrastructure costs that's going to have to be bore at some point, and if we have to keep pushing wastewater north, it's just going to continue to get more expensive. And, you know, I wish that maybe you had been involved so you could have seen some of this.
So how many hours of meetings did you all have?
Four, yeah, about four. I couldn't speak, Jim would have to ask of the time between the staffs behind the scenes, we were sat in the meeting section.
We spent at least an additional four hours in meetings, talking about it, and time preparing for those meetings.
There was obviously a lot of preparation and thought put into it.
You understand the formula on page 10 of the document? 50% times full development cost of Phase 2 wastewater treatment plan improvements times 105% times the number of years elapsed from notice to proceed on Phase 2 wastewater treatment plan improvements today divided by 40 times the full development cost of Phase 2 wastewater treatment plan improvements, plus 50% of the cumulative major maintenance costs incurred related to the Phase 2 wastewater treatment improvement, notice to proceed on Phase cumulative major maintenance costs incurred on Phase 2, I mean, plus, and then it goes on for another page, you know, another half page. Do we understand what this means?
I'm going to say that Jeff with Columbia Capital?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's a bond counsel for Edgerton. He can explain this, financial advisor for-
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jeff White with Columbia Capital Management, we serve as Edgerton's financial advisor, and I can walk you through the formula pretty quickly, it looks worse than it really is. So conceptually, we wanted to provide for the infrastructure that we knew that we needed out of the gate. The benefit to Edgerton of the design you see before you today is they get a plant that's of a size that is operationally more efficient than they would on their own. So their biggest risk is they build a plant, development doesn't come, and they end up sending relatively small flows to a relatively inefficient plant. You folks have a problem where you potentially have too much waste in the southwest corner of your community that will, at some point, require a very expensive fix to resolve. It's really kind of one of those situations where two communities have mutually offsetting needs, in this particular case, Edgerton needs flow to make the plant work well out of the gate. You folks would love to find a way to inexpensively find, to inexpensively essentially push costs off into the future, hopefully far into the future, because we build enough expansion capacity here, but to do so in such a way that's fair to each community. So there's infrastructure that's his, hers, and ours, if we want to think about it, and one of the pieces of the ours is the plant. And so we start out of the gate with a half million gallon a day plant, City of Edgerton is not going to use its full share of that, of their 250,000 gallons a day out of the gate, so the agreement provides that until they need that, you folks can take essentially as much of their capacity as they don't need. So you'll get yours and part of theirs out of the gate, which helps out. As they grow, hopefully, we'll get to a point where five or six down the road, five or six years down the road, each community needs more capacity at that plant, it's going to be designed to be easily expanded. At that point, your staffs come back in a form like this, and they say, "Look, we planned on doing this five or six years ago, it's time to do it, let's do it jointly." The world isn't perfect, and we may find ourselves in a situation where you need capacity quicker than they do, or they need capacity quicker than you do. And so we wanted to create a situation where either community could cause an expansion to be created, where the other community wasn't necessarily ready to do that. And we wanted to do that in a way that was fair going forward. And so the concept of these formulas on 10 and 11 basically says, one community can come to the other and say, "We want to expand the plant." So let's call that community the first mover plant, or the first mover community. So the first mover community comes and says, "We want to expand the plant." The late mover community says, "We don't want to do that at this point, find no problem." The first mover community builds the plant, come out of pocket for those costs, build that expansion, use that expansion. The late mover community comes back three or four years later and says, "Okay, now we're ready." This formula provides a mechanism for that late mover community to buy back into that additional capacity that was built, and to do so in such a way that is fair to the first mover community. So what this formula basically says is, the first mover community is actually, for taking that first mover stance is going to get a little bit of a benefit, which is where the 105% comes from. So we're going to take the cost of developing that expansion and add 5% to it. And that 5%, again, is simply, essentially a reward for taking the risk of building that expansion in the first place. And then the late mover community is going to be required to buy into 50% of the cost of that expansion. But in the meantime, the first mover community has had the opportunity to use that plant, to get full value from that expansion. And so the late mover community shouldn't pay for the portion of the plant life that was used exclusively by the first mover community, so then there's an offset for that. There's also an offset for any amount-